For occupants at the third-floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides. In case of emergency, this is the plenary hall exit plan. For guests situated at the rostrum, the nearest exits are at the north and south rostrum. For occupants at the first floor and front rows of the VIP gallery, the north, south, and main entrance exits are available. For occupants at the VIP gallery, the main entrance and north and south VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second-floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third-floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides.
Good morning, honorable members. The inaugural session will start in two minutes. May we request the honorable members to take their seats. Thank you.
Honorable members of the House of Representatives, today is the fourth Monday of July 2025, and the Constitution mandates that Congress convenes once every year on the fourth Monday of July to commence its regular session. Pursuant to establish parliamentary rules and practices, I hereby call the first regular session of the 20th Congress to order. Please rise for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem to be led by the Saint Therese Educational Foundation of Tacloban Incorporated Children's Choir. Please remain standing for the doxology to be performed by Albert Dagami, Ralph Saul Monteclaros, Jofet O'Zenna, and John Mark Pedrita. The Deputy Secretary-General of the Legislative Operations Department will now call the roll of members of the House of Representatives elected from legislative districts apportioned among the provinces and cities and party list organizations in alphabetical order.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. National Capital Region, City of Calaocan, First District, Honorable Oscar G. Malapitan. Second District, Honorable Edgar R. Erisé. Third District, Honorable Dean Asistio. City of Las Pinas, Loan District, Honorable Mark Anthony Santos. City of Makati, First District, Honorable Monique Yasmin Maria Q. Lagdomeo. Second District, Honorable Dennis Alden B. Almario. City of Malabon, Loan District, Honorable Antolin A. Oretta III. City of Mandaluyong, Loan District, Honorable Alexandria P. Gonzalez. City of Manila, First District, Honorable Ernesto M. Dionisio Jr. Second District, Honorable Rolando M. Valeriano. Third District, Honorable Joel R. Chua. Fourth District, Honorable Giselle Mary L. Maceda. Fifth District, Honorable Erwin C. Tien. Second District, Honorable Bienvenido M. Abante Jr. City of Marquina, First District, Honorable Marcelino Marcie R. Teodoro. Second District, Honorable Attorney Miro S. Kimbo. City of Montinlupa, Loan District, Honorable Jaime R. Fresnedi. City of Navotas, Loan District, Honorable Tobias Toby M. Tianco. City of Paranyake, First District, Honorable Eric L. Olivares. Second District, Honorable Brian Raymond S. Yamsuan. Pasay City, Loan District, Honorable Antonino G. Calixto. City of Pasig, Loan District, Honorable Roman T. Romolo. Quezon City, First District, Honorable Juan Carlos Arjo C. Ataidé. Second District, Honorable Ralph Wendell T. Tulfo. Third District, Honorable Franz S. Pumarán. Fourth District, Honorable Jesús Manuel Bong C. Suntay. Fifth District, Honorable Patrick Michael D. Vargas. Sixth District, Honorable Maria Victoria Copilar. City of San Juan, Loan District, Honorable Isabel Maria J. Zamora. City of Taguig, First Councilor District, Pateros. Loan District, Honorable Ricardo S. Cruz Jr. City of Taguig, Second Councilor District, Loan District, Honorable Jorge Daniel S. Bo cobo. City of Venezuela, First District, Honorable Kenneth I. T. Gachalian. Second District, Honorable Gerald Galang. Region One, Ilocos Region, Ilocos Norte, First District, Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos. Second District, Honorable Angelo Marcos Barba. Ilocos Sur, First District, Honorable Ronald V. Singson. Second District, Honorable Christine Singson Mihán. La Union, First District, Honorable Francisco Paulo P. Ortega V. Second District, Honorable Dante S. García. Pangasinan, First District, Honorable Arthur F. Celeste. Second District, Honorable Mark O. Coanco. Third District, Honorable Maria Rachel J. Arenas. Fourth District, Honorable Maria Georgina P. de Venecia. Fifth District, Honorable Ramón N. Guico Jr. Sixth District, Honorable Marilyn L. Primicias Agapas. Region Two, Cagayan Valley, Batanes, Loan District, Honorable Siriaco B. Gato Jr., MD FPSO HNS. Cagayan, First District, Honorable Ramón C. Nolasco. Second District, Honorable Baby Aline Vargas Alfonso. Third District, Honorable Joseph Jojo L. Lara. Isabella, First District, Honorable Antonio Tony Pet T. Albano. Second District, Honorable Ed Christopher S. Go. Third District, Honorable Ian Paul L. D. Fourth District, Honorable Joseph S. Tan. Fifth District, Honorable Faustino Michael Carlos T. D. III. Sixth District, Honorable Faustino G. D. III. Nuevo Viscaya, Loan District, Honorable Timothy Joseph E. Caiton. Quirino, Loan District, Honorable Midi N. Kuah. Region Three, Central Luzon Aurora, Loan District, Honorable Romel Rico T. Angara. Bataan, First District, Honorable Antonino B. Roman III. Second District, Honorable Albert S. García. Third District, Maria Angela S. García. Bulacan, First District, Honorable Attorney Danilo Dani A. Domingo. Second District, Honorable Augustina Dominique Ditsetina C. Pancho. Third District, Honorable Mark Cholo I. Violago. Fourth District, Honorable Linabel Ruth R. Villarica. Fifth District, Honorable Agatha Paula Aguilar Cruz. Sixth District, Honorable Salvador A. Plato. City of San José del Monte, Loan District, Honorable Arturo B. Robes. Nueva Ecija, First District, Michaela Angela B. Swansing. Second District, Honorable Mario Cocoy O. Salvador. Third District, Honorable Julius César J. Vergara. Fourth District, Honorable Emerson D. Pascual. Pampanga, First District, Honorable Carmelo G. Lazatin Jr. Second District, Honorable Gloria Macapagal Arroyo. Third District, Honorable Elisa Michaela Maika M. González. Fourth District, Honorable Anna York P. Bondok MD. Tarlac, First District, Honorable Jaime Eduardo Mark D. Coanco. Second District, Honorable Maria Cristina C. Ángeles. Third District, Honorable Noel Bong N. Rivera. Zambales, First District, Honorable Jefferson F. Conghun. Second District, Honorable Doris E. Maniquis. Region Four, A. Calabarzon. Batangas, First District, Honorable Leandro Legarda Leviste. Second District, Honorable Attorney Jervil Jinky Betrix R. Luistro. Third District, Honorable King George Leandro Antonio V. Coliantes. Fourth District, Honorable Amado Carlos A. Bolilia IV. Fifth District, Honorable Beverly Rose A. Di Makua. Sixth District, Honorable Ryan S. Recto. Cavite, First District, Honorable Ramón Jolo B. Revilia III. Second District, Honorable Lani Mercado Revilia. Third District, Honorable Adrian J. C. Advincula. Fourth District, Honorable Francisco Kiko A. Barzaga. Fifth District, Honorable Roy M. Loyola. Sixth District, Honorable Antonio A. Ferrer. Seventh District, Honorable Crispin Diego D. Remulia. Eighth District, Honorable Anella Bianca D. Tolentino. Laguna, First District, Honorable Maria Rene Anne Lourdes G. Matibag. Second District, Honorable Ramil Laurel Hernández. Third District, Honorable Loreto S. Amante. Fourth District, Honorable Benjamin C. Agarau Jr. City of Binyan, Loan District, Honorable Walfredo Arman R. Di Magila Jr. City of Calamba, Loan District, Honorable Cherise Anne C. Hernández. City of Santa Rosa, Loan District, Honorable Roy M. González. Quezon, First District, Honorable Wilfrido Mark M. Enverga. Second District, Honorable David J. J. C. Suárez. Third District, Honorable Renante U. Arrogancia. Fourth District, Honorable Keith Maika Attorney Mike D. L. Tan. Rizal, First District, Honorable Rebecca Maria Alcantara Ináres. Second District, Honorable Emilio P. Tanwatko III. Third District, Honorable José Arturo S. García Jr. Fourth District, Honorable Denis Tom L. Hernández. City of Antipolo, First District, Honorable Ronaldo V. Puno. Second District, Honorable Romeo M. Acop. Southwestern Tagalog Region, Mi Maropa Region. Marin Duque, Loan District, Honorable Reynaldo P. Salvación. Occidental Mindoro, Loan District, Honorable Leodi Odi F. Tariela. Oriental Mindoro, First District, Honorable Arnan C. Panaligan. Second District, Honorable Alfonso V. Umalí Jr. Palawan, First District, Honorable Rosali Ang Salvamit. Second District, Honorable Ceci Álvarez. Third District, Honorable Gil Cabarangay Jr. A. Acosta. Romblón, Loan District, Honorable Eleandro Jesús F. Madrona. Region Five, Bicol Region, Albay, First District, Honorable Cielo Crisel Lagman. Second District, Honorable Carlos Andes Loria. Third District, Honorable Adrian I. Salceda. Camarines Norte, First District, Honorable Josefina B. Talliado. Second District, Honorable Rosemary Conejos Panotes. Camarines Sur, First District, Honorable Suyoshi Anthony G. Orribata. Second District, Honorable Vicenzzo Renato Luigi R. Villafuerte. Third District, Honorable Nelson S. Legación. Fourth District, Honorable Arni B. Fuentebelia. Fifth District, Honorable Miguel Luis R. Villafuerte. Catanduanes, Loan District, Honorable Yelohio Leo R. Rodríguez. Masbate, First District, Honorable Antonio T. Co. Second District, Honorable Elisa Olga T. Co. Third District, Honorable Wilton Tonton T. Co. Sorsogón, First District, Honorable Maria Bernadette G. Escudero. Second District, Honorable Wovo Fortez. Region Six, Western Visayas, Aclan, First District, Honorable Jesús Jess R. Marquez. Second District, Honorable Florencio T. Mira Flores. Antique, Loan District, Honorable Antonio B. Legarda Jr. Capis, First District, Honorable Ivan Howard A. Ginto. Second District, Honorable Jane T. Castro. Gimaras, Loan District, Honorable J. C. Raman A. Nava MD. Iloilo, First District, Honorable Janet L. Garín. Second District, Honorable Catherine Joyce F. Goriseta. Third District, Honorable Lawrence R. Defensor. Fourth District, Honorable Virginal G. Birón MD. Fifth District, Honorable Binky April M. Tupas. City of Iloilo, Loan District, Honorable Julian Jam L. Baronda. Region Seven, Central Visayas, Bohol, First District, Honorable Jan Gisnel L. Yap II. Second District, Honorable Maria Vanessa Van Van C. Aumentado RN. Third District, Honorable Christine Alexi B. Chutor. Cebu, First District, Honorable Rea May A. Gulyas. Second District, Honorable Edsel A. Galeos. Third District, Honorable Karen Hope F. García. Fourth District, Honorable Sun Judal Shimura. Fifth District, Honorable Vincent Frasco Duke D. Frasco. Sixth District, Honorable Daphne A. Lagon. Seventh District, Honorable Patricia C. Calderón. City of Cebu, First District, Honorable Rachel Margarit B. Delmar. Second District, Honorable Eduardo R. Rama. City of Lapulapu, Loan District, Honorable Junard Ahong Q. Chan. City of Mandawe, Loan District, Honorable Emery Lollipop Owano Dizon. Region Eight, Eastern Visayas, Biliran, Loan District, Honorable Gerardo Jerry Boy J. Espina Jr. Eastern Samar, Loan District, Honorable Christopher Sheen P. González. Leyte, First District, Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes. Second District, Honorable Lolita T. Javier. Third District, Honorable Anna Victoria Veloso Toazon. Fourth District, Honorable Richard I. Gómez DPA. Fifth District, Honorable Carl Nicolas C. Carey. Northern Samar, First District, Honorable Nico Raúl S. J. Daza. Second District, Honorable Edwin Ong Chuwan. Samar, First District, Honorable Stephen James T. Tan. Second District, Honorable Reynolds Michael T. Tan. Southern Leyte, First District, Honorable Roger Gaviola Mercado. Second District, Honorable Christopher Coco M. Yap. Region Nine, San Buanga Peninsula, San Buanga del Norte, First District, Honorable Roberto Pinpin T. Uy Jr. Second District, Honorable Irene G. Labat Labat. Third District, Honorable Adrian Michael A. Amatong. San Buanga del Sur, First District, Honorable Joseph Kim CU. Second District, Honorable Jaisal Victoria CU. City of San Buanga, First District, Honorable Katrina Reiko Chuatai. Second District, Honorable Jerry Evangelista Pérez. San Buanga Cebugay, First District, Honorable Marlo C. Bankoro. Second District, Honorable Marilesa Doc Morley Hoffer Hasim. Region Ten, Northern Mindanao, Bukidnon, First District, Honorable Se Manuel F. Alba. Second District, Honorable Jonathan Keith T. Flores. Third District, Honorable Audrey K. T. Zubiri. Fourth District, Honorable La Arni Lavín Roque. Camiggin, Loan District, Honorable Jordan Jesús M. Romualdo. Lanau del Norte, First District, Honorable Imelda Kibranza Di Maporo. Second District, Honorable City Amina Q. Di Maporo. City of Iligan, Loan District, Honorable Celso G. Rehencia. Misamis Occidental, First District, Honorable Jason P. Almonte. Second District, Honorable Sancho Fernando Ando F. Oaminal. Misamis Oriental, First District, Honorable Jennifer A. Lagbas. Second District, Honorable Yefjini Vincente B. Imano. City of Cagayan de Oro, First District, Honorable Lordon G. Suwan. Second District, Honorable Rufus B. Rodríguez. Region Eleven, Davao Region, Davao de Oro, First District, Honorable Maria Carmen S. Zamora. Second District, Honorable Leonel D. Seniza. Davao del Norte, First District, Honorable Carlo L. Uy. Second District, Honorable Se Manuel J. Florendo Lagdomeo. Davao del Sur, Loan District, Honorable John Tracy F. Cagas. City of Davao, First District, Honorable Paulo Z. Duterte. Second District, Honorable Omar Vincent S. Cola Duterte. Third District, Honorable Isidro T. Ungab. Davao Occidental, Loan District, Honorable Claudia P. Bautista. Davao Oriental, First District, Honorable Nelson J. R. De Yanghirang. Second District, Honorable Chino Miguel D. Almario. Region Twelve, Socser Jen Cotobato, First District, Honorable Edwin L. Cruzado MD. Second District, Honorable Rudy S. Kawagdan DPA. Third District, Honorable Maria Alana Samantha T. Santos. Sarangani, Loan District, Honorable Steve Chongbian Solon. South Cotobato, First District, Honorable Isidro D. Lumayag. Second District, Honorable Ferdinand L. Hernández. Third District, Honorable Dibo S. Tuwan. City of General Santos, Loan District, Honorable Sherlyn L. Bañez Nograles. Sultan Kudarak, First District, Honorable Ruth M. Sakaluran. Second District, Honorable Belia Vanessa B. Swansing. Region Thirteen, Karaga Administrative Region, Agusan del Norte, Loan District, Honorable Dale B. Corvera. City of Butuan, Loan District, Honorable Se Joboy Esakino II. Agusan del Sur, First District, Honorable Affilito Alfell M. Basku. Second District, Honorable Edibong G. Plaza. Dinagat Island, Loan District, Honorable Kaka J. Bagao. Surigao del Norte, First District, Honorable Francisco Lalo T. Matugas. Second District, Honorable Bernadette S. Barberz. Surigao del Sur, First District, Honorable Romeo S. Momo Senior. Second District, Honorable Alexander T. Pimentel. Cordillera Administrative Region, Abra, Loan District, Honorable Joseph Santoninho B. Bernos. Apayau, Loan District, Honorable Eleanor C. Bullet Apayau Lone District Honorable Eleanor C Bullet Big Tang. Benguet Lone District Honorable Eric Go Yap. City of Baguio Lone District Honorable Mauricio G Domogan. Ifogao Lone District Honorable Solomon R Chunggalao. Kalenga Lone District Honorable Carolyn B Agyao. Mountain Province Lone District Honorable Maximo Y Dalog Junior. Bangsamoro Autonomous Region and Muslim Mindanao Basilan Lone District Honorable Ustads Yustop T Alano. Lanau del Sur First District Honorable Zia Alonto Adyong. Second District Honorable Yaser Alonto Balindong. Magin Nanau del Norte Lone District Honorable Bai Dimple I Mastura. Magin Nanau del Sur Lone District Honorable Esmael G Mangodadatu. Suluh First District Honorable Samir Aitan. Second District Honorable Munir M Arbison. Tawitawi Lone District Honorable Dismore M Sally. Negroes Island Region Negroes Occidental First District Honorable Julio A Ledesma the Fourth. Second District Honorable Alfredo D Maranyon the Third. Third District Honorable Javier Miguel López Benitez. Fourth District Honorable Jeffrey P Ferrer. Fifth District Honorable Emilio Bernardino L Yulo. Sixth District Honorable Mercedes K Alvarez. City of Bakolod Lone District Honorable Alfredo Albi B Benitez. Negroes Oriental First District Honorable Emanuel L E Y. Second District Honorable Maria Isabel L Sagarbaria. Third District Honorable Janice Degamo. Sikihor Lone District Honorable Saldi S Villia. Partilist, One Rider Partilist, Ang Buklod ng mga motorista ng Pilipinas, Honorable Ramon Rodrigo L Gutierrez. Wantahanan, Wantahanan Incorporated, Honorable Nathaniel M Odukado. Porque, kababaian, kabalikatan para sa kapakanan at kaunlaran ng bayan, Honorable Iris Marie de Mesa Montez. For peace, pagtibahin at palaguin ang pangkabuhayan Pilipino, Honorable Marcelino C Libanan, Honorable J C M Abalos. Abamin, Abanti Mindanao Incorporated, Honorable Maximo B Rodriguez Junior. Abangling Code, Abangling Code Incorporated, Honorable Manuel Man Man O Ko. ACIS, Anti-Crime and Terrorism Community Involvement and Support Incorporated, Honorable Advic G Yap. Honorable Jocelyn P Tulfo. Act Teachers, Act Teachers Partilist, Honorable Antonio El Tinio. Agap, Agricultural Sector Alliance of the Philippines, Honorable Nikanor M Breones. Agimat, Agimat ng Masa, Honorable Brian B Revilla. Akbayan, Akbayan Citizens Action Party, Honorable Se Manuel Tadeo Chel El Diokno, Ay Diokno. Honorable Percy Sendanya. Honorable Dadaw Kiram Ismula. Ako Bicol, Ako Bicol Political Party, Honorable Elizalde Esco. Honorable Alfredo A Garbin Junior. Ako Visaya, Ako Visaya Incorporated, Honorable Sunny S L El Lagon. Ako Ilukano Ako, Honorable Richel Singson. Alona, Alliance of Organization Networks and Associations of the Philippines. Honorable Maria Cristina Talavera López. APEC, Association of Philippine Electric Cooperatives, Honorable Sergio C Dago. Asensu Pinoy, Honorable Henry F O O Aminal Junior. BH, Bagong Generación, Honorable Robert Nazal. Bicol Saro, Honorable Terry L Ridon. Cibac, Citizens Battle Against Corruption. Honorable Eduardo Brother Eli C Villanueva. Coop Natco, Cooperative Natco Network Party, Honorable Filimon M Espares. Construction Worker Solidarity C W S, Honorable Edwin L Gardiola. Dumper P T D A, Dumper Philippines Taxi Drivers Association Incorporated, Honorable Claudine Diana D Bautista Lim. FPJ Panday Bayanihan, FPJ Panday Bayanihan Partilist, Honorable Brian Poe. GP Galingsa Puso, Galingsa Puso Partilist, Honorable John Juric Attorney JP D L Padernos. Kabataan, Kabataan Partilist, Honorable Rene Luis M Co. Kamalayan, Kalipunan ng Maralita at Malayang Mamamayan Incorporated, Honorable Carolyn L Tantay. Kamanggagawa, Kampian ng mga maralita at manggagawa, Honorable Elijah Rumbowa San Fernando. Kapuso M M, PM, Kabalikat patungo sa umuunlad na sistematiko at organisadong pangkabuhayan, Honorable Munir N Arbison Junior. KM Ngayon na, Kilos Mamamayan Ngayon na, Honorable Kenneth Paulo C Tereng. Kusog Tausog, Honorable Ayman T Tan. LPGMA, LPG Marketers Association Incorporated, Honorable Alan U T. Magbubukid Mamamayan para sa Gubernong bubuklod sa mga isip at biwan ng Pilipino, Honorable Ferdinand B One L Beltran. Malasakit at Bayanihan, Malasakit at Bayanihan Foundation Incorporated, Honorable Gurly I Veloso. Manila Teachers, Manila Teacher Savings and Loan Association Incorporated, Honorable Maria Nina Francesca P Lacson. M L, Mamamayan Liberal, Honorable Lila M De Lima. Nanay, Honorable Florabel C Yatko. One Co-op, Aurora Integrated Multi-Purpose Cooperative, Honorable Maria Cristina Jihan B Glepa. Filrica, Philippine Rural Electric Cooperatives Association Incorporated, Honorable Presley C D Jesus. PPP, Huersa ng Pilipinong Pandagat, Honorable Harold James T Duterte. Pusong Pinoy, Honorable Journey Jet V Nisay. Sagip, Social Amelioration and Genial Intervention Poverty, Honorable Paulo Henry M Marcoleta. Senior Citizens Partilist, Coalition of Association Senior Citizens of the Philippines, Honorable Rodolfo Ompong M Ordanes. Solid North Party, Solidarity of North Luzon People's Party, Honorable Ching B Bernos. SSS GSIS Pensionado, Honorable Rolando Ledesma Makasait. Suerte, Solo Parent Working for Economic Rights and Other Thrusts for Equality, Honorable Arlin P Ion. TGP, Talino at Galings ng Pinoy, Honorable Se Bong J Tevez Junior. Tingok, Tingok Sinarangan, Honorable Andrew Julian K Romualdes. Honorable Jude A Asidre, Honorable Yedda Marie K Romualdes. Trabaho, tagapagtaguyot ng mga reforma sa adhikaing babalikat at tahango sa mga oportunidad para sa mga Pilipino. Honorable Johan Monich P Bautista, G Bautista. TUCP, Trade Union Congress Party, Honorable Raymond Democrat C Mendoza. United Senior Citizens, United Senior Citizens Coalition ng Pilipinas Incorporated, Honorable Milagros Aquino Magsaysay. Uswag Ilongo, Uswag Ilongo Party, Honorable James Giorgio Ang Junior.
Mister Presiding Officer, the roll call shows that two hundred ninety members responded to the call.
With two hundred ninety members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. To ensure orderly proceedings, the Chair designates the Honorable Lawrence R Defensor of the Third District of Iloilo as the Acting Plural Leader. Before we open the table for nomination of candidates for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives, let me state for the record that precedents, based on previous rules of the House, provide that members who vote for the winning candidate for Speaker shall constitute the majority in the House and they shall elect among themselves the Majority Leader. The Minority Leader shall be elected by the members of the minority acting plural leader.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move to open the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There is a motion to open the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is approved, the nominations are now in order. Acting Plural Leader.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable David J J C Suarez from the Second District of Quezon to make his nomination.
The Honorable David J J C Suarez from the Second District of Quezon is recognized.
Mister Presiding Officer, distinguished colleagues of the twentieth Congress, ladies and gentlemen. As we gather today to formally open the twentieth Congress of the Republic, we do so at a critical moment of our nation's story. One filled with promise but also marked by uncertainty. It is in moments like these that leadership matters most. It is in that spirit that I rise today to nominate a man whose leadership has been tested, proven, and deeply felt across this chamber and beyond. The Honorable Ferdinand Martin G Romualdes. In the nineteenth Congress, Speaker Romualdes steered this institution with both resolve and wisdom. Under his stewardship, the House of Representatives became a true House of the people. Responsive to the needs of the nation, attuned to the voice of the common Filipino, and anchored in the values of unity, service, and progress. He brought not just experience but character. Character marked by quiet strength, strategic foresight, and unwavering commitment to public service. With clarity of vision and steadiness of hand, he championed landmark reforms, strengthened legislative-executive cooperation, and ensured that every voice, regardless of affiliation or region, found space in the national conversation. Colleagues, I have seen firsthand how Speaker Romualdes works, not for the spotlight but for results. His leadership transcends titles. It is grounded in listening, guided by principle, and driven by an enduring faith in the Filipino people. In the face of adversity, he remains calm. Under pressure, he stays grounded. Amid political divisions, he builds bridges. And in times of doubt, he leads with the heart. The nineteenth Congress, under his watch, he delivered one of the most productive and purposeful legislative terms in recent memory. We passed priority measures that advanced the goals of Bagong Pilipinas, empowered communities, and created pathways for inclusive and sustainable growth. But more than numbers of laws, he gave us direction. And he gave the public something more important than power: trust. That trust was not given lightly. It was earned, earned through hard work, transparency, and a kind of leadership that listens more than it speaks, delivers more than it promises, and unites more than it divides. As we open a new chapter in the twentieth Congress, we face fresh challenges: global volatility, domestic headwind, and the ever-present call to bring our people out of poverty and into opportunity. But we also have a foundation to build on: a legacy of inclusive leadership, collaborative governance, and a house that truly works. That legacy has a name, and today it is my distinct honor to nominate him as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Ferdinand Martin G Romualdes. Is not only a public servant of experience and stature, he is a leader of empathy, integrity, and conviction; a unifier, a reformer, a partner of the President, and a champion of the people. Let us entrust the speakership to a man who has already shown us what dignified, decisive, and compassionate leadership looks like. Let us reaffirm our commitment to good governance by placing the gavel once more. governance by placing the gavel once more in capable and steady hands. I respectfully nominate the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 20th Congress.
Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos from the First District of Ilocos Norte to Second, the nomination.
The Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos is recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, distinguished colleagues, on behalf of the Partido Federal ng Pilipinas, I rise today with profound pride and resolute conviction to formally second the nomination of the esteemed gentleman from the First District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 20th Congress.
Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Wilfredo Marc M. Enverga from the First District of Quezon to Second, the nomination.
The Honorable Wilfredo Marc M. Enverga is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officer, honorable colleagues, esteemed members of this chamber. On behalf of the Nationalist People's Coalition, I am deeply honored and proud to second the nomination of Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Ronaldo V. Puno from the First District of Antipolo to Second, the nomination.
The Honorable Ronaldo V. Puno is recognized.
Honorable Presiding Officer, my dearest colleagues, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the National Unity Party, with profound gratitude for his dedicated service during the 19th Congress, and with hopes for an even greater nation under his continued leadership of the 20th Congress, I have the honor to second the nomination of the Honorable Representative from the First District of Leyte, Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Yevgeny Vicente B. Imano from the Second District of Misamis Oriental to Second, the nomination.
The Honorable Yevgeny Vicente Imano is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Colleagues, friends, members of the House, on behalf of Nationalista Party, the oldest party in the Republic, it is with grave honor and pride that I second the motion as our Speaker, Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza from the UCP Partilis to Second, the nomination.
The Honorable Raymond Democratico C. Mendoza is recognized.
Begancealamat, Mr. Presiding Officer. Distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of PCFI, the Partilis Coalition Foundation Inc., led by our President, Representative Saldeco, with confidence and with admiration, I second the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Begancealamat.
Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, there being no other nominations for the position of Speaker, I move to close the table of nominations.
Mr. Presi... the Honorable... There is a motion to close the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is carried. Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to proceed with the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There is a motion to proceed to the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is approved. The election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives is now in order. The Deputy Secretary of the Legislative Operations Department will now call the roll of members. May we request members, upon being called, to state the name of the candidate. They are voting for as Speaker of the House of Representatives without any need for explanation.
Roll call of members for the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives. Honorable Representatives, Abalos.
Abante.
I fully support Speaker Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 20th Congress. May I explain, Presiding Officer, my vote?
Mr. Presiding Officer, with the kind indulgence of the Honorable Abante, let's proceed with the voting without explanation.
Asidre.
Thank you, Kong Abante.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Tingong Partilis votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Akop.
Acosta.
For the Third District of Palawan, we vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Adyong.
The First District of the Province of Lando del Sur votes Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for the speakership.
Advinkula.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Third Legislative District of Cavite, I vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Agarao.
Ang bota ko po ay para kay Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Agyao.
From the Lone District of Kalinga, ang bota ko po si Speaker Romualdes.
Alano.
Milahe Rahman Rahim. From the Lone District of Basilan, I cast my vote in favor of Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Alba.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the First District of Bukinnon, I cast my vote in favor of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Albano.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this humble representation of the First District of the Province of Isabela, votes for a man for all season, a good leader, and a good friend to all, and a visionary, and one of the best public servants that I've ever seen and honored to meet. I vote for the Representative of the First District of the Province of Leyte, Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes.
Almario Chino Miguel.
From the Second District of the Province of Davao Oriental, this representation humbly votes for the... for our... for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Almario Dennis.
From Paquati City, Second District, I voted for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as our House Speaker. Thank you very much.
Almonte.
For the First District of Misamis Occidental, Speaker Martin Romualdes for the speakership.
Alvarez Suce.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the Second District of Palawan, we vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker. Thank you.
Alvarez Mercedes.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I vote for Representative Romualdes.
Amante.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the Third District of Laguna, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes. He is the best man for the job. Congratulations, boss.
Amatong.
Ang...
Mr. Presiding Officer, Oswag Ilongo Partilis votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. This is a presentation from the Lone District of Aurora, votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Angelis.
From the Second District of Terlak, we fully support and vote for Martin Romualdes.
Aquino.
For the Lone District of Otuan City, we vote for... I vote for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Aquino Magcaysai.
For United Senior Citizens Partilis, I support Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Arbizon Munir.
Second District of Sulu, vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Arbizon Munir Junior.
Mr. Presiding Officer, my vote is for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Arenas.
From the Third District of the Province of Pangasinan, I vote for the Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes.
Arrogancia.
From the Third District of Quezon Province, I vote yes for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Asistyo.
As Representative of Third District, Kalokan City, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Atayde.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the First District of Quezon City, my vote is for Ferdinand... Honorable Ferdinand G. Romualdes. Thank you.
Caumentado.
May I would tag? I vote for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes. Thank you.
Ayon.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. On behalf of our Partilis or solo parent, I choose to abstain. Thank you.
Bagaw.
May I would tag, Mr. Presiding Officer? From the Lone District of Dinagat Islands, I vote to abstain.
Balindong.
Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. From the Second District of Lando del Sur, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Banyas Nogrades.
From Lone District of General Santo City, I am casting my vote in favor of our lone nominee for speakership, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Bangkoro.
May I would tag? For the First District of San Juan Gasebugay, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Barba.
Representative Martin Romualdes.
Barbers.
On behalf of the people of Surigao del Norte, District 2, I vote... my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Baronda.
May I aga sa atantanan? I, Julian L. Jamjam Baronda, of the Lone District of Iloilo City, vote for Ferdinand Marco... Martin G. Romualdes. Madamong asalama.
Borzaga.
From the Fourth District of Cavite, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Baskuk.
Thank you and good morning. This is your presentation from the
This is a representation from the First District of Agusan del Sur. I vote Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Bautista Claudio. Bautista Johan Munich.
On behalf of Trabaho Partylist, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Bautista Lim.
Presiding Officer, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Benitez Alfredo. Abstain. Beltran.
May I paabak po from the Bucanong Partylist, I vote for Ferdinand Romualdes for speakership. Thank you.
Benitez Javier Miguel.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the Third District of Negros Occidental, this representation votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Bernos Ching.
May I baga bilateo, aminapo. On behalf of Solid North Partylist, I cast my vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Bernos Joseph Santuninho.
From the Lone District of Abra, my vote is for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Biron.
May Iung aga? The Fourth District of the Province of Iloilo, votes for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Bucobo.
From the Second District of Tagig, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Bolilia.
Mister Presiding Officer, this is a representation from the Fourth District, Province of Batangas, votes for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Bondok. Briones.
Mister Presiding Officer, abstain.
Bulut Bigtang.
For the Lone District of Apayao, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Kagas.
May Iung buntag ka na atong tanan? In behalf of the Province of Davao del Sur, I cast my vote in favor of Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Calderon.
From the Seventh District, Province of Cebu, I cast my vote in favor of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Calixto.
From Lone District of Pasay, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Kawagdan. Romualdes. Kari.
For the Fifth District of Leyte, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Castro.
In behalf of the Second District of Capis, I vote for the Honorable Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker for the 20th Congress.
Kayton.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the Lone District and for the people of Nueva Biscaya, I cast my vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for the Speaker of the 20th Congress. Maraming salamat po.
Celeste.
From the First District of Pangasinan, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Sendanya.
Mapagpalayang umaga mula sa Akbayan Partylist, at ang atibong boto ay abstain.
Seniza.
From Second District of Davao de Oro, I vote Speaker Martin as Speaker for 20th Congress.
Chan.
From the Lone District of Lapulapu City, I cast my vote on Speaker Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Chua.
On behalf of the Third District of the City of Manila, this humble representation fully supports Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Chuatay.
Mister Presiding Officer, my vote is for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Chungalao.
From the Lone District of Ifugao, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ko Elizaldi. Ko Rene Luis.
For Kabataan Partylist, I vote abstain.
Ko Angko Jaime Eduardo Marc.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the First District, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Ko Angko Marc.
Martin Romualdes for Speaker.
Coliantes.
The people of the Third District of Batangas through this representation, vote Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Copilar.
Good morning, Mister Presiding Officer. From the Sixth District of Quezon City, I strongly support and cast my vote to Representative Speaker Martin Romualdes to be the House of Representative of the 20th Congress.
Corvera.
From the Lone District of Agusan del Norte, I vote for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Cruz Agatha Pola.
For the Fifth District of Bulakan, Mister Presiding Officer, I cast my vote in favor of Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Cruz Ricardo.
Ang kinatawan po ng unang distrito ng Tagig at Bayan ng Pateros ay para Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Cruzado.
Mister Chair, from the First District of Cotabato Province, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Kuwa.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Dagooc.
Morning everyone. The Association of Philippine Electric Operatives, a partylist, chose to abstain from voting.
Dalok.
Mister Presiding Officer, our vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Dayang Hirang.
My vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Daza.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the First District of Northern Samar, I choose to abstain. Thank you.
De Jesus.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Pireka Partylist, ang boto po namin ay abstain.
De Lima.
Good morning. This representation as representative of the Mamamayang Liberal or ML Partylist respectfully obtains from the voting.
De Venesia.
The Fourth District of Pangasinan, two districts' presentation, Congresswoman Gina de Venesia, cast its vote for latest First District Representative Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 20th Congress.
Defensor. Romualdes. De Camo.
May Iung buntag sa tanan para sa mas progresibo o mas malinaon ng tercero distrito, I am casting my vote to the good Speaker, Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Del Mar.
Reflecting on the will of my constituents, the First District of the City of Cebu will abstain.
Di Makuwa.
On behalf of the Fifth District of Batangas, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Di Magila.
Mister Presiding Officer, representing the Lone District of the City of Binyan, I am casting my vote in favor of Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Di Maporo Imelda.
From the Province of Lano del Norte, First District, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as House Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Di Maporo City Amina.
For the Second District of Lano del Norte, I vote for Martin Romualdes as a Speaker.
Di Okno.
For the Akbayan Partylist, I abstain.
Dionisio.
In behalf of the First District of the City of Manila, it's an honor and a privilege to vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes as House Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Domingo.
On behalf of the First District of Bulakan, I vote for the Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Domogan.
Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Duterte Harold James. Duterte Omar Vincent. Duterte Paolo. Di Faustino.
Sa ngalan ng ikaanim na distrito ng lalawigan ng Isabela, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Di Faustino Michael Carlos.
Para sa ikalimang distrito po ng lalawigan ng Isabela, sinusuportahan at binuboto po namin si Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Di Ian Paul.
From the Third District of Isabela, we vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Imano.
Padayon Pilipino and the Second District of Misamis Oriental, vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Enverga.
The First District of Quezon Province reiterates its support and vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Erise.
From the Second District of Kalaokan and the Liberal Party, I chose to abstain. Thank you.
Escudero.
From the First District of Sorsugon, I am voting for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Espares.
From Coopna Coop Partylist, this representation votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Espina.
From the Lone District of Biliran, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ferrer Antonio.
For the Sixth District of Cavite, I vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Ferrer Jeffrey.
From the Fourth District of Negros Occidental, my vote goes to my good friend Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Flores.
Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Fortes.
Good morning. The Second District of the Province of Sorsugon votes in favor of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes for the speakership of the 20th Congress. Thank you very much.
Frasco.
May Iung buntag, Mister Presiding Officer. From the Fifth District of Cebu, I respectfully abstain.
Fresnedi.
From the Lone District of the City of Montilupa, my vote goes to Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. uh, my vote goes to Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Fuentebelia.
From the 4th District of Camarinesur, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Galang.
From the 2nd District of Venezuela, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Galayos.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Garbin.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Aku Biko Partilists, we vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Garcia Albert.
Mister Presiding Officer, the 2nd District of Bataan votes for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Garcia Dante.
From the 2nd District of La Union, my vote goes to Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Garcia Jose Arturo.
For the 3rd District of Rizal, uh, we vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Garcia Karen Hope.
I vote for the Honorable Martin Romualdes.
Garcia Maria Angela.
Mister Presiding Officer, as the representative of the 3rd District of Bataan, I cast my vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Gardiola.
My vote is for Ferdinand Romualdes.
Garin. Gachalian.
For the 1st District of, uh, Venezuela City, we vote for, uh, Honorable, um, Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Gato.
From the lone district of Batanes, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as a Speaker of the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Glepa.
One COOP Partilist votes for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House in the 20th Congress.
Yes, sir. Go.
2nd District of Isabela votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Gomez.
Mayong buntag. Ang katauhan sa ikapat na distrito sa Leyte, ibutar o bisuporta sa Martin Romualdes isip Speaker of the House.
Gonzalez Alexandria.
For the lone district of the City of Mandaluyo, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Gonzalez Alisa Micaela.
On behalf of the 3rd District of Pampanga, I vote for Honorable Representative Speaker Martin Romualdes as our Speaker for the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Gonzalez Christopher Sheen.
Good morning, Mister Presiding Officer. For the lone district of Eastern Samar, I abstain.
Gonzalez Roy.
For the lone district of the City of Satarosa, we vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Goriseta.
Good morning. From the 2nd District, Province of Iloilo, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Guico.
As a representative of the 5th District of Pangasinan, I vote for, uh, Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Ginto.
Representing the 1st District of Capis, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Gulyas.
Mister Presiding Officer, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Gutierrez.
Romualdes.
Hernandez Charice An.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. This representation votes in favor of, uh, Representative Romualdes, Romualdes to be the Speaker of the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Hernandez Dennis.
From 4th District of Rizal, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Hernandez Ferdinand.
2nd District, uh, South Cotabato, I vote for, uh, Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Hernandez Ramil.
From the 2nd District of Laguna, I vote Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Hofer Asim.
From the 2nd District of Zamwangasibugay, I cast my vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Oribata.
From the 1st District of Camariasur, I vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the Speaker of the House. Salamat po.
Ismula.
Assalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Ta'ala Wal Barakatuhu. Akbayan Partilist Representative votes to abstain. Thank you.
Iway.
From the 1st District of Negroes Oriental, my vote goes to Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Javier.
Maupay nga aga haatong nga tanan, the 2nd District of Leyte votes Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House for the 20th Congress.
Ko Antonio.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the 1st District of Masbate, I cast my vote in favor of Representative Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives and the 20th Congress.
Ko Elisa.
From the 2nd District of Masbate, I cast my vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ko Wilton.
On behalf of the 3rd District of Masbate, I cast my vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Kong Hun.
Mula sa Lalawigan ng Sambales, yes, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ko.
Uh, Mister Presiding Officer, this, this representation, in behalf of Abangreko Partilists, I vote as Speaker of the House to Representative, this 20th Congress, the gentleman from Leyte, Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Labad Labad.
Good morning, Mister Presiding Officer. On behalf of the 2nd District of Zamwangas del Norte, I vote for Honorable, um, Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Lacson.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Manila Tea Talk Partilists, I vote yes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Lagbas.
From the 1st District of Misamis Oriental, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Lagdomeyo Jose Manuel.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the 2nd District of Davao del Norte, we vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Lagdomeyo Monique Yasmin Maria.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the 1st District of the City of Makati, we vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Lagman.
On behalf of the 1st Congressional District of Albay, I choose to abstain.
Lagon Daphne.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Lagon Sunny.
On behalf of, uh, Aku Bisaya Partilist, uh, I vote for the Honorable Martin G. Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives for 20th, uh, for the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Lara.
Ballo, uh, Presiding Officer.
As a representative of the 3rd District of Kagayan, I vote for Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress. Obalo.
Lazatin.
Maya Pagapanapun, from 1st District of Pampanga, and we're voting for Martin Romualdes for the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Ledesma.
Uh, Presiding Officer, uh, your honors, uh, Negroes Occidental's 1st District, I would like to validate and certify that the holographic manifestation that I issued on May 20, 2025, in favor of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes is my vote. Thank you.
Legacion.
Good morning. As representative of the 3rd Legislative District of Camarinesur, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives in this 20th Congress.
Legarda.
Um, Mister Presiding Officer, uh, on behalf of the lone district of Antike, we vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Leviste.
Mister Presiding Officer, for the 1st District of Batagas, this representation votes for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Libanan.
Sir Presiding Officer, uh, bilang kinatawan po ng 4 Pireka Partilist, ang boto ko ay abstain.
Lopez.
Magandang tanghali po sa ating lahat, Mister, Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of a lone of Partilists, I cast my vote for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes. Thank you po.
Gloria.
On behalf of the 2nd District of Albay, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes for Speaker in the 20th Congress.
Lo, Loyola.
From the 5th District of Cabite, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Luistro.
Mister Presiding Officer, the people of Batanga's 2nd District cast their vote for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 20th Congress of the Philippines.
Lumayak.
From 1st District of, uh, South Cotabato, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Makapagalaroyo.
Romualdes.
Makasait.
Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Maceda.
This humble representation from the 4th District of Manila votes for Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Madrona.
Mister Presiding Officer, Romblon votes for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Malapitan.
The 1st District of Caloocan's for, uh, Speaker, uh, Romualdes.
Mangudadato.
From the representation of, uh, the lone district of Magindanao, I'm going to cast my vote for Martin Romualdes.
Manikiz.
From the 2nd District of Sambales, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Maranyon.
2nd District Negroes Occidental votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Marcoleta.
Good morning, Mister Presiding Officer and dear colleagues. Sagip Partilist opts to abstain from voting. Thank you.
Marcos.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 1st District of Ilocos Norte, I cast my vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the next Speaker.
Marquez.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 1st District of the Province of Aklan, I cast my vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Mastura.
Assalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Ta'ala Wal Barakatuhu. My vote is for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Matibag.
As a representative of the Sampagita capital of the Philippines, 1st District
First District of Laguna, it is my firm vote for the continued leadership of Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Matugas.
As representative of the First District of Surigao del Norte, I cast my vote in favor of Representative Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as a Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Mendoza.
Gigan sa mamamoo, and para sa manggagawang Pilipino, TUCP Partilis para kay Martin Romaldes. And Mr. Speaker, let us finish what we started. For the benefit of the workers of this country, wage high. Thank you.
Mercado.
Mr. Presiding Officer, my dear colleagues, guests, ladies and gentlemen. Peace to all. Hadjung buntag kanatung tanan. All the mayors and our provincial officials of the province of Southern Leyte are very happy that our Speaker comes from Region 8, where Southern Leyte belongs. As the representative of the people of the First District of Southern Leyte, it is my privilege to vote for the gentleman of the First District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as our Speaker of the 20th Congress, House of Representatives, the Republic of the Philippines. Thank you very much.
Mercado Revilia.
In behalf of the Second District of Cavite, I vote in favor of Representative Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 20th Congress. Magandang hapon po.
Mira Flores.
From the Second District of Aklan, I vote for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Momo.
Bayo Buntag. In behalf of the Province of Surigao del Sur First District, I will cast my vote in favor of Honorable Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Montez.
On behalf of the Kababaihan Kabalikatan para sa kapkanan at kaunlaran ng bayan or 4K Partilis, I abstain.
Nava.
The Lone District of the Province of Gamaras votes for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Nazal.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of Bagong Generisyon Partilis, I respectfully abstain.
Nisay.
Por Pusong Pinoy Partilis, I abstain.
Nolasco.
From the First District of the Province of Cagayan, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as the Speaker of the House.
Oominal Henry.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Asensupinoi Partilis gives its vote and places its confidence on Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes. Thank you.
Oominal Sancho Fernando.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the Second District of Misamis Oriental, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes. Thank you.
Odukado.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Wantahanan Partilis supports and casts his vote in favor of Speaker Romaldes.
Olivares.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from the First District of the City of Paranyake votes for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as the Speaker of the House of the Representatives of the 20th Congress.
Ong Chuwan.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the Second District of Northern Samar, I cast my vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as Speaker of the House for the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Ordanes.
As representative of Senior Citizens Partilis, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Oreta.
From the Lone District, Satiif Malabon, this representation humbly votes for Martin Romaldes for Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Ortega.
I vote Romaldes.
Oano Dizon.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Padernos. Panaligan.
I vote for Martin G. Romaldes.
Pancho.
Bilang kinatawa na ika-12 distrito ng Bulakan, buo ang suporta po natin para po kay Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Panotes.
From the Second District of Camarines Norte, I cast my vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romaldes. Thank you.
Pasqual.
Sa ngalan ng tao sa ika-4 distrito ng dalawigan ng Nueva Ecija, ibinuboto ko si Speaker Martin Romaldes. Salamat po.
Perez.
Buenas dias, Mr. Presiding Officer. In behalf of the Second District of Zambuanga City, I cast my vote for Martin Romaldes, Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Pimentel.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as representative of the Second District of Surigao del Sur, I cast my vote for Speaker Honorable Martin Romaldes.
Plaza.
From the Second District of the Province of Agusan del Sur, I cast my vote for Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Plato.
Magandang umaga po. Ang hapon na pala. Sa ngalan po ng ikaanim na distrito ng Bulalawigan ng Bulakan, kami po ay buong pusong sumusuporta kay Speaker Martin G. Romaldes. Maraming salamat po.
Po.
Magandang umaga po. Para sa sapat na pagkain, trabaho, at hustisia para sa lahat, ang boto ko ay para kay Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes. Maraming salamat.
Primicias Agabas.
Naimbag na bigat tayo amin. Masanto siya kabasan at si kaya namin. Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the people of the Sixth District of Pangasinan, I vote for Honorable Martin Romaldes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Kumaren.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the Third District of Quezon City, I will vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Puno.
For the First District of Antipolo City, we vote Romaldes.
Kimbo. Rama.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Rekto.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from the Sixth District of Batangas respectfully votes for Honorable Speaker Martin G. Romaldes.
Rehencia.
From the Lone District of Iligan City, I cast my vote to Honorable Congressman Ferdinand Romaldes as Speaker of the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Remulia.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the Seventh District of Cavite, my vote is for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Revilia Bryan.
On behalf of Partilis Tagimad, this representation votes for Martin Romaldes.
Revilia Ramon Jolo.
For the First District of the Province of Cavite, I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Ridon.
For vehicle sa ro, we abstain.
Rivera.
From Telsika Talak, I vote the Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Robes.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the Lone District of Sanos Edel Monte Bulakan, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Rodriguez Yulohiyo.
From the Lone District of Catanduanis, I vote Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Rodriguez Maximo.
On behalf of the Abante Mindanao Partilis, from the beautiful people of Mindanao, progressive and very eager to have this representation, I vote strongly and gladly for Speaker Honorable Representative Martin Romaldes. Thank you.
Rodriguez Rufus.
Mr. Presiding Officer, my distinguished colleagues, guests, as President of the Centuryist Democratic Party of the Philippines, CDP, and on behalf of the good people of the Second District of Cagayan de Oro, the city of golden friendship, the city of the best white water rafting in the Philippines, I vote for Speaker of the 20th Congress of the House of the People, the Honorable Representative from the First District of Leyte, for Speaker the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romaldes. Dagang salamat.
Roman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer. For the First District of Bataan, I vote for Representative Martin Romaldes.
Romaldes Andrew Julian.
On behalf of Tingong Partilis, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes.
Romaldes Ferdinand Martin. Romaldes Yedamari.
My vote is for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Romaldo.
From the Lone District of Kamigin, my vote is Speaker Martin G. Romaldes.
Romulo.
I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Roque.
Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Sagarbarya.
From the Second District of the Province of Negros Oriental, I cast my vote in favor of Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives of the Second District of the 20th Congress.
Sakaluran.
From the District 1 of Province of Sultan Kudarot, I cast my vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as House Speaker.
Salceda.
Mr. Presiding Officer, my dear colleagues, this honorable representation would first like to greet you, Josmarhain Aldau, as the sole Lacas representative and the Third District of Albay. Like my uncle, former Representative Joey Sartes Salceda, who supported him as the Majority Leader in the 18th Congress and as the Speaker during the 19th Congress, my vote is for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House in the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Sally.
Bisbilara man raim, salamualaikum warahmatullahi talawabarakatuhu. Mr. Presiding Officer, for the Lone District of the Province of Tawi Tawi, my vote is for Ferdinand Martin Romaldes to be the Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Salvacion.
Mr. Presiding Officer, sa ngalan po ng mamaya ng marinduke...
Mister Presiding Officer, sa ngalan po ng mamaya ng marinduke, ako po ay pinagbigyan nilang maupo dito bilang kanilang representante, kahit ice cane dinang ang aking dinadala. Kahit ice cane dinang ang aking dadala noong araw ng eleksyon, ang aking boto po ay binibigay sa ating minamahal na Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Marami po salamat.
Salvador.
Nagmula sa bagong Distrito 2 ng Nueva Ecija, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Salvami.
Mayadnadlaw kanindong tanan, from 1st District of Palawan, I vote Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Matamang salamat po kanindong tanan.
San Fernando.
Ginong Presiding Officer, sa ngalan ho ng kampihan ng mga maralita at manggagawa, kamanggagawa partilist, kami ho ay bumuboto ng abstain.
Santos Maria Lana Samantha.
Good afternoon. The 3rd District of Cotabato Province would like to vote Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Santos Marc Anthony.
Mister Presiding Speaker, from the 1st District of Las Pinas, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Shimura.
From the 4th District of Cebu, I respectfully vote Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Singzon Rachel.
As a representative of the Ilocano people, I cast my vote once again for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Thank you.
Singzon Ronald.
I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Singzon Mihan.
From the 2nd District of Ilocusur, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Solon.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Suwan.
For the 1st District of Cagayan de Oro City and Padayan Pilipino, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Swan Sing Bella Vanessa.
The representation of the 2nd District of Sultan Kudarat casts his vote to Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Swan Sing Michaela Angela.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the 1st District of Nueva Ecija, it is this humble representation's honor to once again cast my vote for the Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Suarez. Romualdes. Suntay. Abstain. Taliado.
From the 1st District of Camarinas Norte, I cast my vote for Representative Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Tan Ayman.
Salamulaykum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. On behalf of Kusuk Taosu Partilist, I would like to cast my vote to Martin Romualdes.
Tan Joseph.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 4th District of Isabela, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Tan Keith Maica.
I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes.
Tan Reynolds Michael.
Samar 2nd District will abstain.
Tan Samir. Tan Stephen James.
On behalf of the 1st District of Samar, I abstain, Mister Presiding Officer.
Tan Chai.
On behalf of Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Kamalayan Partilist, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress in recognition of his proven leadership and commitment to progress. Thank you.
Tan Watko.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 2nd District of the Province of Rizal, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes.
Tariela.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 1st District of Occidental Mindoro, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Teodoro. Tering.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of KM Ngayon na Partilist, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Davis.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of TGP Partilist, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Tianko.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 1st District of Navota City, I abstain, but I will not join the minority. I will be an independent.
Ting.
Mister Presiding Officer, the 5th District of Manila votes for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Tiño. I abstain. Tolentino.
On behalf of the people of the 8th District of Cavite, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
21.
From the newly created District of the Province of South Cotabato, 3rd District, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Tulfo Jocelyn. Tulfo Ralph Wendell.
Mister Presiding Officer, the people of the 2nd District votes and support Speaker Martin Romualdes.
2 pas. Totor.
Mayung buntag, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
T.
Mister Presiding Officer, I respectfully abstain.
Umalí.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ungap.
Mister Presiding Officer, I am voting in abstention in the election for Speaker for this House of Representatives. I have opted not to align with the majority or the minority, and I intend to serve this chamber as an independent member. Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Uy De Carlo.
Mister Presiding Officer, the 1st District of Davao del Norte votes for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Uy Roberto.
As Representative of the 1st District of Zambuanga del Norte, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Valeriano.
I vote for Speaker Romualdes as for Speaker of the House.
Vargas.
The 5th Legislative District of Quezon City votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Vargas Alfonso.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Veloso.
Maupay nga utuhatun nga tanan, on behalf of the 3rd District of Leyte, it is our privilege and honor to vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes for the 20th Congress.
Veloso Gurli.
Speaker Romualdes.
Vergara.
Mahal na tagapanghulo, bilang kinatawan ng ikatlong distrito ng Lalawigan ng Nueva Ecija, lupain ng eka nga kung magsalta. Sa ngalan ang aking mga mamayan, buong pagpapakumbaba at may mahalasakit sa pagkakaisa ng ating kapulungan. Ibinibigay ko ang aking boto sa kagalang-galang na Martin Romualdes bilang Speaker ng mababang kapulungan, na way patuloy tayong magkaisa para sa kapakanan ng sambayan ng Pilipino. Maraming salamat po.
Villia.
From the 1st District of Chiquor, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis.
Ang boto ko po ay kay Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Villia Fuerte Vincenzo Renato Luigi.
On behalf of the 2nd District of Camarinas Sur, we firmly stand with Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Villia Nueva. Villia Rica.
On behalf of the 4th District of Bulakan, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Violago.
On behalf of the 3rd District of Bulakan, I cast my vote in favor of Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Yamsuwan.
The 2nd District of Paranyake, through this humble representation, casts its vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Yap Christopher Son.
My vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Yap Edvick.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of AXIAS Partilist, this representation votes for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of 20th Congress. Thank you.
Yap Eric.
Naimbag na alda tayo amin. In behalf of my kakailan in Benguet, our vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Yap John Gisnell.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the 1st District of the Province of Bohol, my vote goes to Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Yatko.
My vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Inares.
1st District of Rizal, Martin Romualdes.
You, Jaisal Victoria.
On behalf of the 2nd District of Zambuanga del Sur, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
You, Joseph Kim.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 1st District of Zambuanga del Sur, I vote for Congressman Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker in the 20th Congress.
Yulo.
This representation votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Zamora Maria Cormin.
From the 1st District of Davao de Oro, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Zamora Isabel Maria.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Zubiri.
On behalf of the 3rd District of Bukidnon, I respectfully choose to abstain.
Second call of members for the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives, Honorable Representatives. Acop. Bautista Claudio. Co Elizaldi. Duterte Harold James. Duterte Omar Vincent. Duterte Paolo. Green.
Romualdes.
Patiernos.
On the, on the part of Galeng Supuso GP Party List, abstain.
Tan Samir. Teodoro.
Uh, from the first district of the city of Marquina, this representation votes for Honorable Martin Romualdes.
Tupas. Villanueva. Tulfo Jocelyn.